Father, we call the Lord. Derek, you're the real call boy.
Councilman Wollman.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Three present.
Now, we have a form, but our mayor and boss are both out. So, call calls for the, we select a chairman pro term, pro temp to run the night's meeting. So, all of them forward my motion for chairman pro temp.
Make a motion to nominate Dr. Chuck Wollman.
Second that motion.
One motion. Where, what will the chair like a motion?
That about, yeah.
Yeah, so is that. All the voters. Wollman's chairman, pro temp.
Okay, thank you.
I'll pardon you, George Wollman.
Okay, we'll have our invitation given by Councilman Derek Walker and then have the pledge of allegiance to be all stand and bow your head.
Bow your heads with me. May the Lord bless us and grant us the faculty of kindness as we engage our neighbors. Let us be guided into service above self for our community. Allow us the vigor to seek out the vulnerable in an endeavor to strengthen the heart, mind, and character. Allow us to be aware of the benevolence of others during our own times of distress and help us fill our own hearts as we venture to better our society through our talents, our hard work, and our contributions. In your name, Father, amen.
My pledge is only to leave this super flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a redeeming justice for all.
What item on the agenda is consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any changes, Mr. Mills?
Next, uh, which chairman doesn't have to change. We don't do, uh, asking to remove, um, certain duties. A little like proportions of a trust from the electric department and also pull out and save a save, which is the word that is typically wide across. But now that's the, those two hours they pull from the agenda.
We have a motion. Some move. We have a second. Some move, some move. Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor, for favor, vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion case.
Okay. Next thing is number four, appointments, proclamation, and presentations of award. Anything for that?
No, no appointments.
Okay. Number five is all business. A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September the sixteenth of twenty twenty-one. Let's go approve of that.
Motion approved.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
All votes correct. Three yes, motion case.
Okay. Under six, consent agenda. A, consider awarding beer to underground junction boxes from the electric department.
You know, they're all four, all four.
Just do all four, set a date. Eleven, four, twenty-one for a public hearing on ordinance number zero, two, one, one, zero, two, one, rezoning three fifteen Scott Avenue from RS ten to CG. Number C, set a date for eleven, uh, four, twenty-one for a public hearing of ordinance number zero, one, two, one, one, zero, two, two, rezoning twenty-four, fourteen, North Washington Avenue from CL to RS twenty. And D, set a date, eleven, four, twenty-one for a public hearing on ordinance number zero, two, one, one, zero, two, three, reopening connection of Salem Church Road and England Drive. Do we have that? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And second, sorry. Okay. Any discussion? If not, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion case.
Okay. Seven, new business. A, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance number zero, two, one, oh, nine, two, oh, the rezoning of property located Salem Church Road in England Drive from CR and RS fifteen to CG. Mr. Ward, uh, Mr. Mills will take his place.
Thank you, Dr. Wollman, council members. Uh, Mr. Ward is in a conference in Chattanooga. I think I remember how to do these, so I'm sort of not feeling informed tonight. And this request was submitted by Eric Bernhardt. I'll have the prop guy, which is Terry Bullock. It's the general location of the property. We'll do the location now. The southern part is comprised of two sections, one located north of England Drive, consisting of about six point eight nine acres, and one located south of England Drive, consisting of approximately three point six four acres, and combined about ten point five seven acres. So, this is all one portion split by England Drive. The northern portion of the property's border is Salem Church Road to the west. Hollow one left to the east and England Drive to the south. And the southern portion borders England Drive along the north and western boundaries, Hollow one left to the east and High Forty to the south. It's the current zone. As you can see, the area located north of England Drive, the current zone is split, and the portions on is RS fifteen, single family residential, and the portions on is CR, regional commercial. The portion located south of England Drive is the town is on the CR, regional commercial. The future areas planned, it takes these properties to be invested for regional commercial development. And the application was submitted to the life of the development of single family residential attached townhomes, which are not permitted uses in RS fifteen or CR districts, but attached townhomes are permitted within the requested CG district upon the D by planning commission. There's an area of photographs of property that's looking, uh, north. So, this point works on just the south of England Drive there is the small track and the north is the larger track. This is looking south of the two, this is the property. Two portions of the property. It's looking to the east. This is, uh, the end of Salem Drive, which is, uh, you took for study denial the request to recognition from planning commission concerning that. Uh, the track to the, this portion to the south is incumbent by TBA, a utility segment along the northern portion. Both areas, uh, north and south, that sections of the property with challenging to park that both drop off, uh, precipitating a couple of different sections. The water hall and control apartments approved, uh, lease properties for service service, uh, confirmed to provide a capacity of up to one hundred townhomes for the parcels. Uh, Mr. Bernhardt has submitted to the planning commission, whether they're flats for the development of these, uh, two tracts, this is an order piece, which depicts sixty-six proposed one-story townhomes, uh, this part. And then this is the southern portion, which is proposing twenty-six two-story townhomes. So, combined, this is ninety-two units, the ninety-two units home, combined two point five three acres, represents a total density of five thousand one hundred fifty-six square feet per building unit. Um, both, well, both proposed developments would be accessed from England Drive. And the request was approved by the planning commissions recommended by the finance department. In initial, uh, this was talked about in our work session on Monday, the planning commission, uh, also recommended that the council consider reopening Salem Church Road at England Drive, which was closed in two thousand and two by ordinance oh, one, twelve, seventeen, but that was not the condition for rezoning. Uh, and we did take that for study to the November to consider that. And I'll take a back those thought, I said this where, um, the planning commission has recommended, and Eric can correct me on any of this since you were on the planning mission, I've been in Tennessee, but this is the section where Salem Church Road would be reopened. And that was closed in two thousand and two. The planning commission's recommended that study be completed by our engineers determining if that can be reopened. The lines requested you have the recognition's approval of the rezoning request.
Part of the cul-de-sac there does, uh, sit on the property in question. So, part of the, the current turnaround is, is on the property. So, if you did open it up, I'm sure it would correct that as well.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all vote.
No, no public hearing.
Oh, we have a public, excuse me. Uh, take this back, apologize. I'll open the public hearing about, uh, this ordinance, Salem Church Road in England Drive. Do we have anyone to say anything about this? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, all vote.
All votes correct. Three yes, motion case.
Thank you. Seven B, consider approval to extend agreement to the UCHRA SAS to facilitate access to social services to individuals in need and clothe them. Mr. Mills?
Art Wollman, council members, this agreement, um, established originally a pilot program with UCHRI substance abuse solutions program. We originally approved it in September of twenty twenty. Um, it's extended to, to January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Program was intended to provide the city with enhanced sources to assist individuals in need of housing support, counseling, and medical and mental health care. The original agreement and first extension provided that the trial program would run through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and it cost to the city four thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month, or fifty thousand dollars a year. The pilot program, we believe, has worked well. Representatives from SAS program indicate before the two or twenty clients have been assisted since the start of the program. The services that we, as I just mentioned, provided include provision of basic needs, which includes food, uh, emergency housing, transportation, addiction, medical and mental health assistance. I'm proposing the council approve the extension of the original agreement on signed terms at the same rate of four thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month through the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This is a place that I, and after our discussion on Monday, I requested that Luke Eldridge and Ryan Henry both who were with the SAS program be here to answer some of the questions that I couldn't address Monday, but I would recommend for approval. And as I said, look around, both of you, catch you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Before we can have any testimony or things, we need to have a motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay. Now, uh, would, uh, Mr. Eldridge, would you like to talk up here at the election?
Okay. Well, thank you. So, give you a little rundown, a little bit on our, what we've been able to accomplish. I know there were some questions, but let me give you a rundown. If you have any further questions, myself or Mr. Ryan Henry can answer those for you. So, we do have the contract swap. So, we call it with the SAS program, that is, that is our whole thing that we do now with swap individually. That's what Mr. Mills is talking about with two hundred and twenty different individuals we've helped. And with that, also, what comes with that is that this is where our numbers get bigger, and this is where showing you what the success of this program has done so far for the city. So, we've done over eight hundred intakes with individuals when we get the phone calls, um, and the two twenty are included in this as well. The other thing is treatment placements. We've done over a hundred and seventy-three. Permanent housing, we've been able to get eighty-six people in permanent housing with just SAS, or just with the swap program is what we do with you. We've been able to do over, um, thirty permanent housing. We actually will house somebody more than likely tomorrow if everything runs through. Uh, we have also had over three, thirty, three hundred recovery services that's with one-on-one with us. Uh, individually, we have seven people on our staff that have been able to access and do this. Remind you, we are twenty-four, seven, and we get calls all the time, and we, we are doing our best to navigate these individuals where they need to go. Veterans served, we've done twelve. Emergency nights, we do have, uh, a grant that allows us to do emergency nights in a local motel, and we've done over seven thousand emergency, seventy-five hundred emergency nights, getting people off the street. And this includes families. We just put a family in today that had three children. Uh, we are put, we've gotten two or three more families, because I know it's one of the questions is about individual. These kids range from anywhere from twelve years old all of the day down to a few months old. So, we are able to house them, get them the support they need to move on. We, uh, transportation, where when people needing help ride, doctors or whatever, if they decide they want to move on, it's over five hundred transportations we've been able to accomplish. And the justice, justice involved individuals, there's over four hundred and fifty that we've been dealing with. Now, these are individuals. This is not how many times we, this is individual and individuals we've assisted. Um, one of the best things we've been able to do with swap since we've started this and with, uh, the SAS program is the community support and the community involvement. Been talking with churches, been talking with hospital, uh, plateau mental health, um, the county. We have been trying, we have been successfully pulling our community together to work on this issue. Granted, it is getting bigger. I know that, we know that, and we have told and we have been saying it's going to get bigger. And, um, we do appreciate that this get continued because we know it's going to be much needed with everything that's been going on. COVID has not been friendly. Uh, that slowed down and shut down a lot of resources for these individuals. A friend of mine, her mother actually passed away due in COVID because of her DTs. Uh, she could not get what she needed, and she passed away. So, these services are going to be highly, highly effective moving forward, but I know there are going to be a lot of more people needing these services just due to where we at in, in the nation, where we are in the community, and trying our best to serve this many people with six people. So, that's why we're pulling the community together to successfully, uh, go after and go after this attempt to help those individuals needing the help. But if you have any questions that I haven't answered, I, myself and Mr. Ryan Henry will be able to answer those.
I've, I've got a quick question, or a couple, probably. Uh, you know, and first off, I do, I've looked over the data that was provided by your agency, the city and everything, and, um, I, I think you guys have been performing a great service, um, to the homeless community, um, and, and in helping us as a, as a community try to address a lot of these problems and, and address the needs, uh, for people that are out there on the streets and in encampments too.
Sure.
And, um, I guess the question is, how, how big is the homeless population in particular? And, and how many individuals does that look like? You know, day to day, are we talking a hundred people, two hundred people? Um, and, and to kind of follow that up, how many of them lived here prior to becoming homeless? And, and I, I'll mainly raise those concerns because I, I think that, you know, a large part of, of helping people is to help them before they become in a situation where, where they become homeless. And, you know, as a community, we need to kind of know, you know, what we can do, where we can address these problems, you know, where we can see the red flags or not, how, how we can prevent that. Um, is it something we can prevent? You know, there's been a lot of hearsay of, of people being brought into the community or, or being sent to our community, and I guess those are the biggest questions that I receive from the public. And, um, if you guys can help answer those, or, you know, if we need to try to get together and work together, um, as, as different agencies and different groups to, to find that information out and address it, I think that that's probably the most important concern that I hear.
School system arounds identified three hundred, that's person, the school system.
Right.
Through, through SWOOP. To learn very, so. And that's, that's the ones we know of.
Yeah.
There's no telling how many are camped out in invisible neighbors.
I actually found, I actually went to a camp yesterday morning that I didn't even know existed, and it was a pretty nice, I will say nice camp. It had a bridge going over the creek. Um, it, I mean, they, they, they've been there a while. Um, and it, and it was over on, by Maxwell and over by King Creek School. And, you know, it was there, first time I ever heard about it. Um, you know, seventy, you know, we, we've been told seventy-five to two hundred, like you said, the school system says there's over three hundred. So, it all depends on what data you use to identify homeless. Uh, with, when we've started this, we get more calls with people that are living in motels, and they, they can't do anything. And one, one sector will say, yeah, they're homeless, another says that they're not. Um, we know of individuals that are living in hotels, been living in a hotel for over five years, been living in another hotel for over two. And, um, so we, we starting to see a lot of those people calling out, crying for help because they see the success and they hear about what we're doing because somebody got help from us one time, so now they're calling us, and we try to do that. We got a waiting list of people when it comes to our emergency shelter because we only have thirty rooms, and we can only do so much because it does, that costs money. And, uh, we have a waiting list of about a hundred and eighty-six, but we still are actively working with those individuals. We call them on a weekly, weekly basis, seeing where they're at, having them come into the office. Um, and those individuals, if they, some of them have found success on their own, and found housing on their own, so then we take them off the list, and then we tell them about other, our other stuff we have within UCHRA to assist them, to make sure they maintain and are, stay stable, but if you need us, we're there. Um, when it comes to, man, the number of people, they'll tell you, whatever you think it is, times it by three. And that may be.
For it to, to answer one of your questions about where they come from, of all, all the people that I've interacted with, the total number is two hundred and almost three hundred people this year, uh, and two hundred and sixty-four claim to be from public county.
But Ryan, can you come up with a search cell to look out and, we need to keep a record of who's speaking in this, I don't know if everybody in the council knows.
I'm, I'm Ryan, uh, and I, I'm the, the field guy, I guess, for SWOOP. I've been working in the homeless community since two thousand and fourteen. I worked for six years at the rest commission, and, uh, I spent twelve years in addition to OxyContin and, uh, everything that came with that, so I, I kind of know both sides of the table, if you will, so. It's kind of me.
So, when going, you know, you were saying hearsay regarding who's coming. Most of them are from, I, a lot of them are from here, but, uh, we do know that people come in from different counties in vehicles to fly signs. Uh, we do know they are being dropped off, um, by other counties. We do know they are being bussed in. And so, we know those because we've either seen it or the individual themselves tell us, yeah, uh, actually a hospital within our upper Cumberland brought somebody down here to this hospital and just dropped them off. And so, that happens. Um, so then we're, we're, we're trying to deal with them, work with them, and trying to help them. Uh, we do know they do come from other areas that, some of the key points in that are, we are in the middle of Nashville, Knoxville, Chattanooga. We're right there on that cross of one eleven and forty, and then we have a Greyhound. So, we, we are a hub. We are, we are a honey hole, I guess, if you will. And as the city continues to grow, these matters will continue to grow as well, we feel it. We've seen that trend over the last few years. The, I know one question was how many unshelved, like, what's the data from not last three years? Uh, it does show we do have more unsheltered than sheltered homeless right now, according to the point in time counts that we are involved in. We've been involved in for the last, since probably two thousand and fourteen for you, and, because we've worked in this field for a very long time. So, we do see more unsheltered now, and I think it really spiked up this past year because, and I believe it's because of COVID, and, uh, and there's just more coming, and all the organizations that can do overnight can't even handle what's coming through sometimes. Uh, bread of life is only thirty minutes from here, and that is another homeless shelter in Crossville. They're full. Our mission's sometimes full. Hey, so we, there's just a lot more people coming.
I read a report about Hamilton County, and, uh, since December of twenty twenty, they've seen eighty percent increase in homeless in their, yeah, so it's, every, everything's on the rise, divorce, abuse, addiction, suicide, especially since COVID.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, every, every bad thing you can imagine is coming up.
And it's making things more difficult, um, because when COVID hit, people's addictions got a little worse because they, they had nowhere to go, they couldn't get certain things, and they just, I think, I think Narcan even increased it. Narcan, um, calls, the police department get, well, Narcan increased that year. Uh, so now people are even further along in their addiction, so that does lend to what we deal with, and we have the numbers on those that are just homeless, those that are mentally ill and homeless, those that have a substance abuse issue mentally ill and homeless, so.
You take, you take these issues separately, they're complex, hard enough to get a little mad. If you combine all three of them together, homelessness, addiction, and mental health, that's a whole, that's a whole other beast.
Yeah.
I, I think a good rule of thumb is, is help those who are willing and put forth effort to help themselves. That's a big, there's, there's a, there's several out there that I talked to, uh, on a regular basis who just, for one reason or another, aren't ready yet. The old adage of, you give a man a fish, you can feed him for a day, let's teach a man the fish, you can feed him for a lifetime. What do you do with the guy who doesn't want to learn how to fish? There you go. And I, I think, an anecdote I learned from my three-year-old was, we, we took her fishing for the first time, and she really didn't know what she was doing or had any interest, but she would come back and say, man, we go fishing, man, we go fishing. So, she knows where to go to find out when we're going to go fishing. And this time, last time we went, she showed a little more interest because she got bored, you know, five minutes into it. But I know that she knows where she can go when she goes to go fishing. So, I, I think a lot of that, it's, it's a long-term, it's a long-term problem because these folks didn't end up in shape or in overnight either. So, it's going to take twice as long to get them out of them when they're ready to get out of there. I think having, as the city grows, not only bringing in businesses and entertainment, but also to think about how we want to bring in the resources to take care of those who fall off, off the path. It's, uh, I think it, it's, it's a community problem. It's going to take community involvement to give a community solution.
Yeah, and that's what we've been doing, is pulling that community together, the churches, even the business owner. We've been, not just, everyone, not just focusing on churches, but business owners, the individuals, pulling all those together and going after this not as just individually or just as a SAS, but this is a community effort, and that is our heart. That is what we want to do, is pull the community together to, to help them even see that you got to look at it a little differently because it does have a stigma. Right? It does have a stigma, and some of these people, some of them, i- it's their choice. Others, it's not. The other issue we have is housing. Housing, it's, uh, Megan, uh, affordable, yeah, there's a difference between my house and affordable housing, right? There's a difference, and some of these people can't afford it even based on the twelve, thirteen dollar an hour jobs they could get, so. But housing is, affordable housing is big, and Megan, one of the ladies that works at the Herald, she has a phenomenal article coming out tomorrow just talking about you search even in Putnam County for housing that some individuals like we work with could obtain housing. You can find eight places, Putnam County, that they could afford with a HUD voucher or something like that. Three of them are unavailable, so that leaves five. And I was telling somebody earlier, this is the first time ever that we've done these HUD vouchers, shelter, all these different things we do to help people with assistance. This is the first time ever I've had people that have lapsed on that because there's nothing affordable out there. So, HUD needs to look at some things, we need to look at some things. I'm actually talking with, uh, Mr. Dow Harris with Hollins Residential. He has, he and I are talking, trying to figure out, how can we put more here for that, for those individuals? So, we're looking at the housing side of that and hopefully talk next week regarding how can we work together, but it's going to take more than, it's going to take the community to fix, fix this issue. And so, we do appreciate what you guys have done here, because I think with, this program has showed us, it's, just showed us what, how big it really is. And, because a lot of people would tell you that, that wasn't here, uh, but I think this program has really showed that, and so we appreciate that.
I've got two questions. Um, the first one, can we start tracking the data of where the individuals come from so we can have, um, concrete data? So we can have concrete data. Um, when I was a, a trooper, I know lots of times you get someone walking up and down the interstate. You would take them to the local place that has a, a rescue mission of some sort. So it may, you may bring someone from Crossville, you may bring someone from Smithville into Putnam County because that's the only place for a rescue mission. But I didn't know if that's something that you guys could possibly do.
Well, yeah, I track, I track, I track where, what county they're from. If they're not from the upper Cumberland, it's just a general outside of the region. And then if they're not from Tennessee, it's outside of Tennessee. That's.
Yeah, we've tracked it here. So two sixty-four is, says they're from Putnam.
That's what they say, they, they, what they call home.
And then we have a few from outlining, one from Warren, one from Overton. But we can track, we can like, doing that.
Or, but how they get here, like what agency brings, brings them here, um, how they.
Yeah, we can do that.
Making their way to, to Coopville or places.
Why, why you come to Coopville, why, how, why?
And this, the second thing I've got is, um, there are the people that want help. Um, and there are of course the people that, um, might not be ready to, um, to be helped. Do we have a strategy of what to do with those individuals? Because it seems like that's the part that's getting worse.
To do with those who, who aren't ready for it.
They aren't, aren't ready for help. Because if, if we arrest them and put them in jail, then they're permanently tied to Putnam County because they're going to go to jail for one night before they're kicked out. They're going to be on probation or. So what strategies can we formulate?
That's, that's the question.
That'd be a good work session to figure that out, honestly, because we power preaching, preaching's reputation. So we get out, we keep, hey, we're here, we're here, we're here.
There's just still a relationship with them because there's a lot of trust issues.
Yeah.
Mental health that they're contesting. So having a, a familiar face come see them occasionally. Sometimes it works. We got, we got two guys at a mountain motel that we've been working with for.
Years.
Years, really, since the mission days.
Yeah.
Finally, they've, they've made a lot, they're doing really well now, so.
Because what I've, um, this is all hearsay from the community, from citizens talking to me. But like, people are trespassing, people are doing incredibly illegal things. But it's pretty difficult to try to put them in jail just because of the fact that it's not really going to accomplish any, any share with that single night jail.
That's, that's what we view maybe that there's things we could do inside of jail, offer different programs or something. There, there's, there has to be something more than what we're doing as far as.
And most of those probably mental health.
A lot of them.
So, you know, and you can't make people, it's not illegal to have a mental health issue, right? It's not, so, and you can't force them to take their medication without something. So we run into that a lot. There, I think everybody knows of one individual that we, we try to help a lot. But she, unfortunately, this individual is getting, it's worse and worse and worse. And one day we know what's going to happen. But, um, but we can sit down and sure and have a talk about that, see how we can do that. Love to have that. Because again, I think getting the whole community, getting the community involved, getting those players in here and say, how do we, how do we do this? And work as a team. And by doing that, I think that right there will really help the, help individuals and our whole community and help people feel, feel good about what we're trying to do here.
Do you ever work with, um, probation?
Yes, yeah.
Just to make sure that people are staying on a correct positive path.
Yes, so what we do is, uh, we get a lot out of, from probation. We get a lot of community corrections for sure. And, uh, so they're assigned a peer recovery coordinator. And then that peer recovery coordinator meets with them on a regular basis. If that person stops, it's reported back. Because that is one, they're trying to, we're trying to do that to, to keep them out of jail. And it's been pretty successful in most cases. But you do have those that just, they don't, they haven't caught it yet. And they haven't understood it yet. Sometimes they have to go do their due. And then hopefully they catch, and sometimes they, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But we, we do have those, we do have a few that are at the motel that are on probation. And so they have certain things they have to do. And probation wants that, so we abide by what probation wants.
So to try to interpret that a little better. I, I, I understand that there are several hundred, more than several hundred that originated in Putnam County, actually where they previously resided. Is part of that figure, you know, are they coming out of homes in Putnam County? Were they, are they coming out of where they previously incarcerated? Um, is that a large nu- number of that figure? Um, I'm just trying to understand what the challenge is.
It's hard to, to drill down because a lot of them, in, in the moment of, of the crisis that's happening, they don't make a lot of sense sometimes, or they can't tell you. Uh, but if there's a checkbox, I'll check all of the above.
Yeah. And of course evictions now, so we're getting calls on people being evicted.
And so there was a guy the other day, his landlord died. So somehow he ended up on the street because his landlord died. There's a lot of, uh, family, multiple families in a single family home. Somebody dies or gets evicted, everybody has.
Yeah.
And there's situations like that. Of course, out of the total number, a hundred and forty-four are justice involved, which is either they just got out of jail or they're on probation or, uh, somehow retired into the justice system.
The school system has a, a list of those individuals who are living in motels. So I had them give me that, and it was almost three pages, um, of kids that are living in motels. And, uh, parents trying to make ends meet. The school system can, you know, they, they have means to do what they need to do to help them. Uh, and you've got multi-families living together as well.
The school system has different definition of homeless versus what the federal government says homeless and serious. You know, there's, there's a lot of that. Future too, but nonetheless, there's a lot of people that need to be divided.
Yeah.
Any further, any further questions?
Uh, one, one more question, sorry, Chuck. All right, it was just a technicality question. Uh, is, is our program in line with grant funding? You know, are you guys funded in your other programs, SAS and everything else beyond? I guess this is the only question I need to ask. Is it beyond what our contract and, and funding basis? Okay. That's, that's the only question I have. So thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
I really appreciate all the hard work that you're putting in.
Excellent.
And answered questions for us.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, guys.
Can I, can I, what the? What the brother here was talking about? Okay, I grew up in the suburb of Detroit. See where you guys are right now, but I've been there and done that. I work with homeless, adults, homeless children. And I've seen kids that had to sit on top of a sewer cover with a box on their head to stay warm at night because they didn't have a way to go. Okay. I used to work in a church, a student of, of Northern. And we would go downtown once a month to take clothes and shoes to the kids so they would have shoes to wear. Now, I'm talking about ten little kids that didn't have a way to go. Okay. And we would take boxes of shoes, shoes to those kids. And when services was over with and they were all fed, and we'd number the boxes of shoes out, they would get them a pair of shoes, maybe. My concern is the kids, okay? I have four grandchildren. And if my grandchildren had to go through, what's on these kids that would, you know, just kill me? Okay. But what I've seen in the years of living in the suburbs of Detroit, okay? It came to the city. And it got to the point to where the homelessness, the populations just grew. It grew, it grew. And it got to the point where my wife could not go to the mall by herself because the homeless people were actually following her to the car and wanting money or something. And she was afraid to go to the malls anymore. I didn't go to malls with her, okay? It's going to get out of hand, it's getting out of hand, okay? And I'm a true believer in what the Bible says. The Bible says that men used to basically, I don't want, you know, get into, you know, cutting up. But anyhow, I worked years, over forty-seven years, and I finally retired. But this gentleman sits right over here by the interstate, been there for two years with a dog. Okay, I was over at the gas station the other night because I live over in subdivision over there. And I come out and he was sitting there with a dog. And I said, sir? He said, yes. I said, you know what? I said, they have a sign right there, help wanted, seven fifty an hour. He looked at me, he said, why don't you just blank, blank? And I said, well, I'm just trying to help you. You, you can go out there sitting on a plastic pail all day long right by a restaurant that's been doing, you know? You can go, you can go talk, he coming after me. And he starts swinging everything, of course, I mean, you know, I got my car to go off. But I just want to tell you guys that it is our opportunity to do something that needs to be done. And I am telling you from experience, my thing is the kids. The adults can take care of themselves, but the little kids can't.
Thank you, sir.
I like it so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, we don't have a venue for public hearing until the end of the meeting. Any other questions, uh, from the council? Okay, if not, all vote.
Although it's correct, three yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security for highway safety grants of chief evidence.
Dr. Wallen, counsel, uh, these are the THSO grants, uh, that we're fortunate to get, uh, generally every year. There's three grants, the SAD grant for twenty-five thousand, the network coordinator grant for twenty thousand, and alcohol DUI grant, uh, it's a penny short of forty-five thousand. Grant period begins, began on October the first, ends on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Uh, there, there is no, there is no match, uh, in this fund's training, overtime, and equipment. For, for, uh, activities under those grants, not recommend your approval.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify above vote.
Although it's correct, three yes motion carries.
Seven E, consider authorizing the city manager to decide an intergovernmental agreement between the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County and the City of Coopville, accepting the terms of internet crimes against children grant. Chief Evans.
Dr. Wallen, counsel, this is a, uh, our ICAT grant. So again, an annual grant that we have received for the last several years. Uh, it's administered by Metropolitan, uh, Government of Nashville, Metro Police Department. Uh, the grant is for fifteen thousand dollars. There is no match. And again, it, it funds equipment, training, and, and travel for some of our officers involved in that program. The grant's actually, term actually commenced on July the first. Uh, we just now got the paperwork, uh, in order to, to bring it before you. And it ends on June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, chief. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all vote.
Although it's correct, three yes motion carries.
Seven F, consider awarding bid for Baidors at Station One City Hall, uh, Chief Young.
Chairman, counsel, we're seeking to replace the four Baidors here at Station One at City Hall. They're going to be funded with savings from other capital items that were coming below budget. We had one bid that was submitted for twelve thousand, twenty dollars that did meet the specs, and I would ask for your approval.
Thank you, chief. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all vote.
Although it's correct, three yes motion carries.
Seven H, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Symmetry Energy to administer remarketing a portion of the currently unneeded downstream capacity on the East Tennessee Pipeline and acquire additional upstream capacity from Tennessee Gas Pipeline, Mr. Mills.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Wallen, counsel. Excuse me. Um, this map here deflects, uh, it's, it's a lot of words for a pretty simple process. The blue line shown on this map is the capacity that y'all allowed us to acquire earlier in July. Uh, to get gas on that blue line, we have to also get a capacity on that red line, which comes from the Gulf of Mexico. Uh, this additional capacity needed is on the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. We have been working with Symmetry Energy, our marketers, to obtain the additional capacity as well as negotiating the terms of funding for the second capacity's path. The means for funding is based on the current three thousand capacity that's on that blue line that we just acquired on the other pipeline. All the newly acquired three thousand capacity is not immediately needed for use. Our plan is to add a thousand DecaTherm's in our current delivery schedule and remarket the remaining two thousand DecaTherm's. Symmetry E- Energy will contract the remaining two thousand to other users on an annual basis. The makeup of this contract allows us to rescind any or all of the two thousand for our use as system growth dictates the need. The two thousand will be marketed for us at an increased value. This arrangement will allow us to park a portion of the recently acquired capacity until needed and use the revenue to supply the additional capacity on the pipeline from the Gulf. The remarket process will fund the additional upstream capacity space we're purchasing. I move that the city manager be authorized to execute this agreement, but with a condition that the City of Coopville expressly does not waive any of its privileges and immunities afforded it under the Tennessee Governmental Tort Liability Act codified in TCA twenty-nine dash twenty dash one oh one, and specifically does not waive the limitation on damages of property damage of a hundred thousand and personal injury of three thousand dollars and limits any indemnity provisions to said limits. This condition clarifies some wording associated with agreement documents. I would request your approval and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Uh, do we have a motion? Uh, whoever want to make the motion, want to repeat what Mr. Mills said to make sure we've got it perfectly clear?
I'll make the motion. I move that the city manager be authorized to execute the agreement, but with the condition that the City of Coopville expressly does not waive any of its privileges and immunities afforded it under the Tennessee Governmental Tort Liability Act codified in TCA twenty-nine, twenty-one, zero, one, and specifically does not waive the limitation on damages of property damage of one hundred thousand dollars and personal injury of three hundred thousand dollars and limits any indemnity provision to said limits.
Well, thank you. Do we have a say? Any discussion of this?
I, I, I do want to say thank you for all your work on, um, being able to provide more natural gas to our community. It's a big thing for us to be able to expand and grow the community.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge step for future of. My science teacher would be proud that I was able to use DecaTherm in, in my future.
Any other comments? If not, all vote.
Although it's correct, three yes motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, under eight, citizens request for hearing before the city council. The gentleman that was wanting, you can talk for up to three minutes, no more, and come to the record.
Identify yourself please. My name is Galera Dudley. Um, I just wanted to, um. Speak to the council about the, the issue of homelessness and, and things like this. Uh, I run a, a large social media, uh, group here that has, uh, a high volume of people. So we see a lot of requests and all that, um, for aid. And, um, so I also try to help, uh, the Cook for Human Fund, which is a fund started by Officer Mark DeClaire, uh, Police Officer Mark DeClaire. And I know that, uh, the SAS program calls on him sometimes to have fun, sometimes they can't, when he can't. Um, I also try to work with, uh, Independence Again, um, and the Recovery Kitchen, uh, which is, um. Uh, the Recovery Kitchen is a program that actually is going out into the community. Feeding people, trying to get them toiletries, things of this nature and, uh, open a door to the ones who are not ready. You know, it's like, we're always here for you, you know, go get with them. So some things I've been noticing is that a lot of times when an official proclamation comes out from the city or the sheriff or whatever. The messaging in it is kind of not useful. As far as from my perspective, um, it'll be like, we're protecting your, the community from the homeless, you know, don't get the people, um. Don't give handouts. I agree with that messaging, right? And they'll say, there are resources, you know, out here that you can give to, but it never tells anybody where those resources are. It's like the citizens have been supposed to go out and figure it out, you know, okay, these are the ones that the city's talking about. Uh, and, uh, if they would just say, you know, Cook for Human Fund, here's, here's one that you can give to. That intervenes in crisis situations that can keep people from slipping over the edge, you know? Um, Recovery Kitchen, here's one that, you know, is getting out there. And, and actually feeding people and trying to get them back into the system as they can accept it. Um, and there's so many more and it's, it's just a huge difference in saying, okay, you know. So many of these people are addicts and, and, and alcoholics and have mental illness, you know? And, but there are a few of them who actually want help and we're trying to help them. That's not true. There's hundreds upon hundreds of, of people out here that, uh, you know, there's families in cars. They don't want help because they're afraid DHS is going to take their kids away if they get found out about things. And so they're not going to come up and say, yeah, I need help, I don't have a place to live, you know, it's not three minutes. All right, so anyway, that's my, that's my, um, thing is, is consider the messaging, you know? And can it be more effective? Can it be more useful? Can it actually engender help from the community?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any comments or sayings? Thank you. Any, uh, of the council who'd like to speak?
I would. Um, Mr. Mills, is there any way, um, that we can try to file a list of, um, NGOs and other five oh one C three's that are really doing, um, a good job in the community and just have that resource available?
Part of the reason that we have our agreement with SAS program is they're a public clearinghouse and they have all these groups that people could go to. And that's part of what they do. When they find somebody, they send them to the player or send them to all of the programs. And again, that was one of the main reasons we did this agreement because of all these, I shouldn't say the laws, different agencies and groups are out helping people. Somebody that coordinated all, that was one of those attractive things that I do, Mr. Gray. Is that located, people can serve as a clearinghouse and get it like that. So we have, we've got all that. It has a comprehensive list of all of the programs that are viable to people in our town.
So my, my, my focus was on those programs receiving funding, not the services they're putting out. That the people actually have the place to get the money instead of to, uh, to the bank.
Thank you, sir. Can, can you work with, um, Mr. Dudley and try to, he's got a very powerful social media presence? And try to get some of those, um, resources that you need out there so we can get some funding into some of those organizations?
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Wong, I've got, let's say a couple of things real quick. Um, kind of regarding this issue. I think it's going to be important for the council, um, to work with SAS and community members in the future to try to create additional avenues to. To engage in this, these issues that face our community. And, um, I hope that, you know, at the next, perhaps at the next council, regularly scheduled council work session. Uh, we can discuss this further when the remaining members of our council can be with us and, and, you know, not let this issue just end with a vote today. But continue to strive to make our community a better place for everyone. Thank you.
I'd like to say something, but we, uh, Luke and Ryan have several different ideas that they think. Help and one possibility would be to have, let them gather all this and have a work session with the council. So you can hear their ideas and see if it's something that we want to assist with. They've got, we, the bar is pretty pointed, we, they've got several different ideas, of course, all, you know, it's funding and other different issues. But I'm sure they'd be glad to get together and sit down with the guys and, you know, inform a work session and go over all their ideas. And then we could get anybody else that wants to participate. I know, but you said it already in the Bella District, they're part of the regional council, they're studying this issue too. Lots of people are studying it, you know, not just here, but nationwide, nobody else come up with the perfect solution, but, you know, we definitely try. But that might be something to consider.
Yeah, I certainly think we should do a special work session. I think that's a great idea. Um, and it's, as soon as we can schedule that and, and everybody, give everyone time to prepare for something like that, I think, I think it's a wonderful idea. Um, and then from there, perhaps we can work out how we would create a task force or a, a group to address these issues.
Thank you. Uh, this has been productive, so, uh. The homeless and factor, Cookeville is doing something to help the homeless in our area. I think it's a very reasonable thing because of the growth of our area. So we appreciate what SAS is doing and we thank y'all for coming. And if I had any other comments, I'll adjourn the meeting.